Okay, we will begin the January 27th meeting of Dublin City Council. And call to order.
Ms. Saley.
Here.
Mr. Leckleider.
Here.
Mayor Keenan.
Here.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Vice Mayor Gerber.
Here.
Ken, I guess we go right to the Pledge of Allegiance, Ann? Okay. Greg, you want to lead us?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to abide from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this portion of the meeting is where we have citizen comments. Mr. Maurer.
Wow. I wasn't at the last council meeting. You're the new mayor, correct?
I think that's correct.
Your honor, your honor, your worship! I see this complete change in landscape here. And I need to adjust to it. I see Greg Peterson here. You know, I'm curious to know if I had any hand in your election. In the council meeting we had before the election, I used this podium for all kinds of things. And I used it to discuss the candidates. And somebody mentioned the name Greg Peterson. And I said, "You know what? I'm going to say something about him here, which I know you're going to take back to him, and it's going to make him very angry." And that's what I want. So, his name came up, and I said, "Oh, he's a safe candidate." Did they bring that back to you?
I did not hear that.
Oh.
But I'm not angry.
You're not what?
I'm not angry.
Well, I intended to make you angry, so you'd really get a rocket under you and run. Okay. I have to adjust to this new picture, you know? And one of you, for whom I have a very high respect, well, let me back up a little. I have a respect for everybody on council. But for whom I have a high respect, came up to me the last time I was here and said, "You know, when you get up there, you repeat yourself." And I said, "No, I didn't say then, but I'll say now." Yeah, I repeat myself. And repetition has been invented to bring people back to things they don't want to talk about. So, that's, yeah, that's why I repeat sometimes. And I guess some of you recall that, you know, it's difficult to see you over there. And, you know, when I came in tonight and saw the two of you there, the mayor and the vice mayor, I was a bit jolted because we've had the picture of sharing, man and woman, for mayor and vice mayor. That's not there, you know? I can't tell what happened in the bang-smash-crash kind of meeting you had before this, but it isn't there. And of course, there are only two women here now. But the sides are equal, two to five, the sides are equal.
You know, we had three women, too.
Well, I know, but you could have put another one in. So, I get, yeah, I do repeat myself. And I have, as you've noticed in all the last series of meetings, speeches up here, that I have a moral litmus test, which I bring in every time. And the moral litmus test is that you were morally wrong in making a contract with the university coaches of football to bring them back for the rally here. I, and I will, and I know you had a tendency to want to see something good in it, and you say, "Well, they'll probably help the young kids who play football to, they'll learn how to do things better, and they'll do them better," and all that. You can't do that. Going to take you through a play here, the punt and the punt return. And the punt goes, and the receiver has an option of calling a fair shot, calling a fair catch. And he's not going to do that very often, because he'll be called a sissy if he does. But what happens, he runs with the football, as fast as a human being can run, and I calculate that's about 15 miles an hour. Punters run towards him, the punting team runs toward him, also 15 miles an hour. And the two of them collide at 30 miles an hour. Now, you know what 30 miles an hour does to an American car, which is test-checked against a barrier running 30 miles an hour? Well, that's what they engage in. But I'm not worried, because all I need to say, mothers, mothers, you remember that male child you suckled and raised and had great dreams about? You want him to have mashed brain? Cabbage brain? Well, I don't want to say cabbage, because that's bad press for cabbage. A mashed brain, or crippled arms, crippled legs, when he's 40 and 50 complains about an old football injury. So...
Thank you, Mr. Maurer. Your time is up.
Oh, thank you.
Yep. As always, it's interesting.
Beg pardon?
As always, it's interesting. We appreciate it. Thank you.
That was a nice response. It was interesting. Okay, good. See you later.
Thank you. Chief Wu.
Mayor, and counsel. It's hard to believe, but like 13 years ago, then Chief Bostic brought me to actually this same podium and introduced me as his Assistant Chief and replacement upon his retirement. Actually, that circle is closing, and so tonight, I get the opportunity to introduce you to Assistant Chief Alec O'Connell, which I think most of you have seen before. Two weeks ago, our board voted to promote Alec into the role of chief upon my retirement. And so, that is rapidly approaching, and I felt that the opportunity to bring Alec up here and introduce him, there will be more of a formal reception for him beginning of April. But I'll tell you what I promised our board is that, first of all, one of the goals we had when we first, you know, took that position was to develop our talent from within. I think we've really done that with Alec. He's been active in the community, he's been active in a lot of the events, I'm sure you've seen him. And I told them, and I'll tell you, I'm sure he will not let you down. And with that, I think that we promise a seamless transition. There's a window of my leaving here, probably between May and the end of June, probably a little bit closer to the beginning of May. But during that time, not that I've dialed in the exact date, but during that time, we'll promise you the same thing I promised them, and that will be a seamless transition. So, I want to thank you for all the support you've given me. We still have a little way to go here yet. But again, thank you, and I'll introduce you to Alec.
Well, I just want to tell you, I look forward to working with all of you, I really do. If you need anything, like the chief's always been there for me, I'll always be there for you guys to help you. I know it's a huge responsibility, and the relationship we have with the township and the city of Dublin's been great. And so many people here have helped me and given me some guidance through that, and I built some great relationships. So, if you need anything, feel free to call, whatever I can help, personal, professional, whatever I can do for you, I'm there for you. And I've had a, I've had a lot of help with the chief, and he's led me in the right direction, and I've built some good bridges to a lot of the people here, and I appreciate their support through that, too. So, if I can do anything for you in the future, please, please let me know. And again, I do appreciate the opportunity I've had. Thank you.
Congratulations, indeed.
Thank you.
You know, there's very, years ago, when you came on board, I think I was on the board when we, when you-
That's correct.
When you were hired. At that time, we set up an assessment center that was made up of chiefs and other fire personnel around the, really around central Ohio and the area. There's really strict testing requirements, there were educational requirements, and you kind of passed the mustard on all those coming up through the ranks, from lieutenant to captain to bat chief, and now on to chief. So, you've done a great job, we appreciate you having on board. And I noted out front that we had the chief, the ghost of chief past in Chief Bostic, chief of present, ghost of the chief present in Chief Wu, and-
That's right.
The chief of the future. So, we had all three there.
Good group.
So, congratulations, and we're looking forward to having you on board.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, this brings us to the consent agenda at this time. Everybody's had a chance to review those items. Is there anything anybody would like to have removed? Hearing known, look for a motion to approve. Motion second?
Second.
Second. Ann?
Ms. Saley.
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson. Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Okay. That brings us to ordinance 70 dash 13.
This is only approximately 10.5 acres located on the west side of Paul Blazer Parkway, between the intersections of Rings Road and Park Center Circle from PCD Plan Commerce District to PUD Planned Unit Development District to modified development text and preliminary development plan regarding sign and parking requirements.
I think, as everybody's aware, council's expecting a report from staff on the issues involved in this matter. That report should be in our hands, according to Marcia, during the first meeting in February. And it's my understanding that Mr. Hale will be requesting that the site be postponed to the second meeting in February. However, he does have a few brief comments about issues you'd like council to consider as they're reviewing this report. And if you'll be brief, I'll really appreciate it. Thank you, Ben.
Okay, thanks. I know you've got a long agenda. We are asking that you table this until your second meeting in February, so you'll have a chance to receive and review the report that's coming up. Since this matter was heard in August, we have continued to work with staff on some issues, trying to improve the site plan some. The only two things that I really want to emphasize is that the client really believes that this parking is needed if this building's going to be rented. And, you know, we've been, they've been trying to rent it for some time unsuccessfully. One of the things that we did at Planning Commission as a condition was that we agreed not to do these improvements unless we got a tenant who needed the parking. And so, that is, as I remember, the staff, or the Planning Commission's condition, it was that it'd only be done subject to staff approval. So, we think we truly need this parking in order for this building to reach its potential. And we think that the report that you're going to get, I haven't seen the report, but we believe that report is going to back up this and also point out to you other buildings in town that are challenged. And there are some buildings, and, you know, I've always looked at buildings and real estate, I think, in maybe a little bit different way. They're not only an asset of the owner, but they're also an asset of the city. The city, you know, these, the economics of these buildings are, you know, what really drive the city, and I think the owners and the city need to be partners, and they need to really work together to achieve the highest use that we can get out of those buildings. So, we will be back in a month, and again, we're not going to do this stuff unless it's needed. And we also, the only other thing I want to point out is, this building, even after we do these improvements, will still only have 65% occupancy, and the code allows 70. So, we're well inside of code. We've got much more green here than is required by code, and we're not, so we're not trying to maximize it to get it to 70. We're just trying to get it to a parking number that makes some sense. So, we hope when we come back and we show you the new site plan and have a hearing that will get your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. So, we'll entertain a motion to postpone this to the February 24th council meeting.
So moved.
Second. Second. Ann?
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Zerker.
Yes.
Ms. Saley.
Yes.
Okay, we have second readings, ordinance 101 dash 13.
Amendment chapter 153.04, for Technology Flex District of the Dublin Code of Ordinances to permit commercial vehicle rental as conditional use, and section 153.002 use definitions to add a use definition for truck and van rental establishments.
Mr. Gunnerman?
Thank you. We have an amendment that was originally brought to us by Smith and Hale on behalf of their client, requesting some changes to the code to permit some truck and van rental. We have, meaning the planning staff has basically gone through and rewritten much of the language from what was originally submitted, although it's a fairly simple and straightforward ordinance. I would point out that we did make an error in our original drafting of the ordinance. We have a correction on your desk this evening. Basically, it's one sentence that was left out by mistake, but very much part of the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Those should be in your red folder, for those that didn't see it. They were added later.
The summary of the provisions, basically, we added the definition of truck and van rental, put it in the Technology Flex as a conditional use, specific use standards, 20,000 square foot minimum, not permitted on lots bordering either the freeway, arterial roads, or residential property. It's designated for rental vehicle parking area. It is a maximum of a 25-foot maximum length for the biggest truck that can be utilized on the property. And the servicing of vehicles, except for minor washing and cleaning, will be indoors. The screening is in the Tech Flex District for outdoor storage, it's already there. And you'll also see a cross-reference back to the landscape section of the code. The area in blue is the Tech Flex zoning, where this in principle can apply. You've got a couple of areas that are outlying a little bit, but a large part of it is along Shire Rings Road. However, you see the red and green, these are the major arterials that I were just referring to, where you cannot front this particular activity on those particular roads. So, that cuts down the utility of this area quite a bit in terms of locations. The truck sizes basically go from about a 10-foot van up to a 26-foot truck. Get a little better sense of that size in that this one is the largest end of the spectrum. This is more in the middle. So, that's what we're dealing with in the extreme cases. This amendment was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. They do recommend it, felt it met the guidelines for code amendments in the zoning ordinance. This is one of the areas, for instance, where it could be utilized, the yellow area, if I can get my pointer here. So, that cuts out some of the other area that's adjacent to the right of way in this case, that would not be permitted by that limitation. Same way in this area, this is Emerald Parkway and Shire Rings. We have areas that basically fronting around the freeway where it is not permitted. It would be permitted in this area. This is the location where we've really had the principal interest for utilizing this activity. This is another set. Most of all of this area is Tech Flex, but by the time you take out the limitations for either residential property or for frontage on arterial, like Avery, you're left with only these smaller areas. This is one of the larger areas, it's Tech Flex, contains city property, but it is basically not permitted. Another area I pointed out earlier was a little further north, up on Post, near perimeter. Both those are principal highways, also front the freeway, so they would not be permitted there either. The definitions are what you see in the code, truck and van rental establishments, this is the actual language, paragraphs A, B, and C. Be happy to give you any additional explanation I can, but that's principally what's going on.
Okay. Counsel, questions?
I have several.
You want, Ben, do you want to address this?
Our client is Bates Property. Bates Property is the family that owns Stanley Steamer. They have a number of buildings in that area that they are trying to reposition in the market. There are two buildings to the north of this, one of which is currently occupied by a moving company, my three sons, who is going to move out by the end of February. Those buildings are up against the freeway. One of those buildings they have leased to AT&amp;T, and the other building, AT&amp;T, they're pretty sure is going to take it, once it's vacant. And each of those buildings will have like 50 employees in it. Those are our tech people who come out to install your TV or whatever. This particular site, I think, is totally interior. This company that wants to go in has had a longstanding relationship with Stanley Steamer. They're currently located in Mansfield, and they would like to have a site in central Ohio, closer to a large part of their client base. This is a company that largely supplies trucks to businesses, although if someone came in and wanted to rent one, they'll do that, but that's not their, that's not their primary focus. So, they don't need a location that's highly visible to the public, because people know who, you know, they're repeat, and they know where they are. So, and we worked with staff and council about the screening of this lot, so that these trucks will be in a screened area, six foot high. There is a building there that, over the years, has been used by Stanley Steamer. They've done some light repair in that building, also some washing of trucks and things like that, but the kind of activity that this company wants to do there is really set up for their use. And it's been pretty much the same use. It's been a building where they had trucks, and they serviced them in the building. So, we would ask that you, if you would, to amend the code, then we will have to go back to Planning Commission and ask them to give us a conditional use and work out the conditions, so we're not, we're not done yet. I'm done, but the case is going to go back to Planning Commission. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Ben. Questions?
I have an offer. Yeah. Gary, I'm curious why the decision was made to put this as a conditional use in the entire Tech Flex area, when we just have one? I mean, I would think that this wouldn't be a business that we would particularly want to attract, and, you know, some of those locations give me a little bit of heartburn when I hear about six feet of screening only, and I know it's a conditional use, but, you know, it just seems like we're opening a door here, and I'm not sure why.
Well, I think the principal reason for the conditional use was not to open a door too wide, basically to be able to do an even-
Right, I understand that, but I'm guessing my question was, why the whole, why all Tech Flex? Why not just, you know, one part of it?
Tech Flex is a straight district, so we're really not in a position to specify subareas the way we do in PUDs. So, the types of things we have done here, the arterials particularly, not adjacent to residential, those are the types of things that you can do in a straight district. And it happened that this has been in a straight district for some time. There's really no good way to get at it otherwise.
The adjacency to Wilcox Road, is there any way, and I don't know what council's pleasure would be, if we could back that up? If you would get that slide up there. It looks like you could have this type of business right up against Wilcox Road and innovation, or maybe not innovation so much.
Yeah, the residential requirement took it out of this area.
Okay. So, we've got Wilcox Road there. I mean, there's a fairly nice office complex there that was upzoned from industrial years and years ago. It's the offices at Wilcox Place there. And it strikes me that you wouldn't necessarily want to have a truck rental establishment directly across the street. And on that, you know, that roadway is a roadway down into that residential area, it's just not very welcoming. You know, we've got some challenges there with appearances of the industrial-
I think you're right. It has some potential there. A couple of things. To do that, to get up to the square footage that's required by code, I think you'd have to assemble a couple of those parcels on Wilcox, which is possible. But I doubt that that assemblage would probably extend back to the east, further than those particular lots. So, it's probably not a huge likelihood, but among all the areas, it's probably the more likely of anything I could come up with in a kind of a negative sense. I think we potentially could eliminate the adjacency to Wilcox if that was something that council desired.
I would certainly be supportive of that. I don't know how the rest of council feels.
I would agree.
I think.
Okay. And I'm just curious if there are businesses within Dublin that we anticipate using this facility, or is this more folks coming in? You mentioned that this is a Mansfield company that's coming to central Ohio.
Well, Stanley Steamer uses them, so that's one business, but I think they, I think they like this location. Number one, it's close to one of their clients that uses them, but I think they also feel that there are other businesses in the area that will, you know, that they will, that they will, that will use them. They, my understanding is that there's not particularly any intention for them to open another one, that they think they can service, you know, central Ohio from this location. So, certainly, they're going to be renting to other businesses, but-
How many trucks?
Well, the lot is not that many. I have not looked at a layout, but most of their trucks are out. They do have some there, but I think the great majority of their trucks are not on that site. They're out at clients, and they may transition back through, but-
So, you don't have a lot of coming and going-
No.
Of the trucks, they're out for a period of time?
They're usually out for a period of time. And they say that the great majority of their businesses, it's not, it's not individuals. It's a business, it's primarily a business rental company.
Okay.
But if you put into the code section, and Wilcox Road with those other, you know, it says arterials, and you said Wilcox Road, I mean, I think that takes care of it. Yes.
Okay. And then, describe how the screening works. I was really confused in reading the P&amp;Z minutes. We're talking about, it was six feet, but then it was, no, not six feet, it was to screen the entire, you know, whatever.
It really ends up at six feet, when you really boil it down. I think in a couple of cases where it had particular characteristics with some adjacency to other businesses, we might have other provisions that apply. I'd have to look through the landscape section to be sure.
Could P&amp;Z apply a higher screening if they were in the conditional use position?
Yes, they could. And I think that's the type of thing we would expect out of a conditional use.
Okay. So, Planning and Zoning said six feet isn't enough, we want, you know, a 20-foot row of something?
It gets tough over six feet in a lot of cases to provide the long-term effective type screening we like to have. We've got a fair track record established at six feet, but I think in the exceptional circumstances, which we did think about, we can come up with some mounting and some other things that can extend that.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Others, please?
If I could follow up on Amy's last comment regarding screening, and ask you, Gary, if, I don't know whether this one amendment, this 14C, would address this or not with respect to screening, but one of the companies that Mr. Hale referenced, the moving company, on many occasions has strategically parked one of their large trucks along 270. Frankly, it's advertising. And I want to know whether this addresses that. You know, let me cut to the chase here. I don't want to see that. I don't, you know, I think that circumvents, you know, our regulations, you know, with respect to signage and advertising and so forth.
Nothing in this particularly deals with it one way or the other. That's been an ongoing discussion we've had, come up on two or three different occasions in the last few years. in the last few years regarding our sign code.
We have cited, we have cited people for, if you remember, in fact, I think it's the company that's moving out, has parked trucks very, various places through Dublin. And we have cited them with violations. And at the end of the day, we did get enforcement with them. But it's something we have to stay on top of because, you know, I can go out and park a truck at Kroger's tonight and we have a limit how long it can sit there.
Right.
And then we also have the sign ordinance. So we have used the enforcement process. And at least in the last two, three years, it's been pretty successful, Tim.
Okay. And I remember a radio station did that at one of the parking lots in Metro Center as well. I haven't seen that, the radio station situation in quite some time. And with respect to the moving company, I haven't, I can't tell you the last time I saw it, but I just know I did see it quite a bit. Okay.
They still do it some. I mean, we-
I'm sorry?
They still do it some.
Yes, they do.
We've had our own problems there, so they're not going to be there at the end of February.
It's going to go away soon.
So, but what staff is telling me is that it's not something that we can write into code?
I don't know that there's anything in this particular section that would be particularly applicable. I think we have at times tried to imagine refinements to the sign code that might better get at the subject. But it's been a little while since we've had that discussion.
Okay.
Sorry. I would point out that because of how this is written, it does kind of remove the view lines from any arterials or any freeways or anything like that. And with the screening, it probably solves the rest of it. And the other part of it with this one company or any other company that does it, it's all about finding them, citing them, and going after them. I mean, it's just, and it's something that happens everywhere. I mean, people figure out that they can do that. But, you know, the shopping centers are also pretty good about chasing people out of their, off their private lots that they see that, and they try to do it all the time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. We have public testimony, Wally, Mr. Maurer?
I think when you hear my question, you might be tempted to pound me into insensibility because I ask a question to which I know the answer. And this has to do with the length of the truck, which is not to exceed 26 feet. Now, I don't know the volume of traffic involved here. And 26 feet is half of the legal length of a trailer pulled by a semi. And I don't know, this is boomtown and I don't know, again, the volume of traffic here. But is there anticipation of conceivably trucks, semi trucks, tractor and semi?
No, there really isn't. The, that was the particular point we were trying to make by pointing out that our max is the vehicle we had on the screen. Specifically getting the point that we would not permit any articulated vehicles to go into this.
So, but if the volume would increase, you'd have to go somewhere else.
You'd have to go somewhere else.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other council discussion? Amy, do you want to put a motion on the floor?
Yes, and I don't know how to word that we, the setback requirement on Wilcox Road, I don't know.
The adjacency?
If I might, I think the operative place would be under newly revised paragraph 14 titled Truck and Van Rental Establishments. The last sentence starts, "To minimize views from adjacent streets, this use shall not be permitted on a lot of budding arterial street or freeway." And I would add right there, or Wilcox Road.
Perfect.
Make it?
That would be my motion.
Okay, there's a motion. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Anne?
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Jenice Zerker?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And ordinance 01-14?
Accepting the annexation of 4.6 acres, more or less, from Washington Township to the city of Dublin.
Mr. Gunnerman?
Thank you. I'm not sure how long it's been since we last discussed this. But this is an annexation for the expulier property, which, as soon as I get this, located just east of Kaufman Road, north of Forest Run. It's the area in red. The area in white is the currently unincorporated area of Washington Township. The green area is all the city. This is the aerial view of it. You can see that the access point is from Nature Drive here. This is the official annexation map for the 4.6 acres that was approved by the county. This is part of an expedited two-annexation process. The city has already approved the required service resolutions, which were necessary before the Franklin County Board of Commissioners took action on October 15th. The required waiting period has been completed. And once this particular ordinance is approved, it will be effective in 30 days. I'm not sure if any of you are aware of it. I think it may have come up in one of our earlier meetings. We do now have a rezoning petition on file. We have not taken any action on that or begun review, waiting for this action to first take place. But as you can see, their proposal is for four lots. That would, again, this is Nature Drive. It would be extended up here. The lots are in conformance with the R2 suburban residential that's been requested. Lot of reviews to be done here. Changes are possible, but it is on file.
Very good.
And concludes my comments. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Gunnerman? We have the, does the applicant have a representative here?
Ben Hale, 37 West Broad Street. We were called by a gentleman who lives in Dublin currently, Bob Boich. I think Bob lives mayor someplace in your neighborhood. And he was interested in buying this piece of property to build his own home on. And so we're asking for the, for the annexation and and we've asked to have it divided into four lots, the zoning we filed, because Bob is going to take, I think, the big lot to the east and probably sell the other ones. But that's what's going on here.
All right, thank you. Council questions? Anybody? Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Anne?
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Jenice Zerker?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2-14?
Petitioning the county commissioners of Franklin County, Ohio, for annexation of approximately 3.6 acres of land located at 190 North High Street to the city of Dublin.
Ms. Grigby?
Yes. Last fall, the city purchased two parcels of property from John Kilberry along the Scioto River on the east side of Dublin Road for the future park along the river. And one of the parcels, the southern parcel, was currently in the city of Dublin. The northern parcel was in Washington Township. And this ordinance will allow the law director's office to file the annexation petition in Franklin County to bring this second parcel into the city of Dublin.
Okay. Questions? Any other discussion? Anne?
Ms. Jenice Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Ordinance 3-14?
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire 0.018 acres, more or less, permanent multi-use utility grading, utility and drainage easement, and a 0.011 acre, more or less, temporary easement from James A. Harden and Catherine T. Harden in declaring an emergency.
Ms. Ott?
Good evening. This is the first of several acquisitions to come before you here in 2014 for the construction of the final phase of the Dublin Road South bike path. As you recall, a few years ago, we began construction down at Tuttle in Dublin Road and have been working our way north for the past two years. I just want to take a quick moment to update you on the entire project, if I may, prior to getting into this specific parcel. This project involves 18 property owners. Some are within the township and some are within the city limits. And the project itself is 3,500 linear feet. It's one of our longest bike path sections to implement in one phase in some time. We also have some complexities with this project, given the amount of limestone walls. There's over 1,600 linear feet of limestone walls to be reconstructed as part of the project. We also have two pedestrian bridges, about 20 feet long, to install, as well as a culvert crossing. So we have some complexities to the design of this and are trying to work very closely with property owners who are impacted by the project as we go forward and be sure that we are being fair and addressing their concerns and trying to accommodate the need for this connection in this part of the community as well as those individual property owner interests. Moving forward, we're looking towards hoping to complete the acquisition phases project in the first half of this year and working with utility companies for the relocation of utilities in the second half of 2014. There's 21, at least 21 utility poles identified at this time that need to be relocated. There's multiple users on all of those poles and we want to ensure there's not an interruption of service in doing that relocation. So getting that work done in 2014 and moving into construction in 2015 as soon as it's permissible with the school schedule and peak traffic times in the spring here in the community. Does there any questions overall before I get into this acquisition?
No.
Okay. Thank you for letting me give you that brief update. This particular acquisition before you is with James Harden and Catherine Harden, two property owners on Dublin Road. We had amicable negotiations with them and came to agreement at the appraised value for the property interest of both temporary and permanent easements. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about their acquisition.
Counsel? Questions? Hearing none. I think we need a motion to treat this as an emergency.
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Peterson? Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Jenice Zerker? Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
On the ordinance?
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Ms. Jenice Zerker?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ordinance 4-14?
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire 0.054 acres, more or less, permanent multi-use utility grading, utility and drainage easement from J.C. Land Company Limited declaring an emergency.
Ms. Ott?
This is also another property owner that we are interested in working with. We've come to agreement at the appraised value.
Questions? This also, they've been asked to treat this as an emergency. Motion to treat it as an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Anne?
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Jenice Zerker?
Yes.
On the ordinance?
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Jenice Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Ott. Ordinance 5-14?
Authorizing the appropriation of a 1.437 acre parcel, more or less, fee simple interest from Peace Hansen LLC located at 6570 Riverside Drive, city of Dublin, county of Franklin, state of Ohio.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, this ordinance, as well as the next one, are the two properties that we are preparing to file eminent domain cases on for the relocation Riverside Drive. We don't intend to file at this time. We're in discussions with both property owners and hopefully moving toward avoiding those litigation. But this does enable us to be in a position to file when we get further down the road. And both landowners are aware that we're doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel questions?
I don't have a question, but in light of both these projects that we're attending to this evening with the bike path, walking path in historic Dublin and then now this one, I think that if we could make a little note to ourselves that when we finalize it and do a grand opening of these things, that we particularly invite people like this to come and have a special role in that because it is through their willingness to really work with the city that we're able to do such a major project and change the face of our community.
Very good. Mr. Maurer, I see you signed up on 5-14?
Believe it or not, I am, once in a while, nostalgia-driven. Otherwise, I'm brutally hard-headed. And that's a lie. At any rate, this is a declaration of helpless sympathy for the two owners here involved. There's the one with the driving range and the one with the restaurant, chiefly because I have straightened out many a cricket shot on that driving range. And I've found that restaurant really very pleasant. So goodbye to both.
Thank you. Any further council discussion? Anne?
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Jenice Zerker?
Yes.
Ordinance 6-14?
Authorizing appropriation of a 0.34 acre, more or less, fee simple interest, of which 0.116 acres, more or less, is present or occupied from Jen Josh LLC located at 6694 Riverside Drive, city of Dublin, county of Franklin, state of Ohio.
Mr. Smith, anything further?
Same discussion, that's, and that is not the driving range. It's a little rental house at the end there. Thank you.
Counsel, questions? Anne?
Ms. Jenice Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Yes. Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Ordinance 7-14?
Authorizing the city manager to dedicate a 0.571 acre, more or less, of permanent right-of-way and 0.128 acre, more or less, of temporary easement to the Ohio Department of Transportation in conjunction with the I-270 US-33 interchange project.
Mr. Hammersmith?
Yeah, actually, I'll start out. As you're aware, the I-270-33 interchange project's moving forward. ODOT and the city is currently working on the design phase as well as the right-of-way acquisition phase. The city owns several parcels along the area that improvements will be made. And the request this evening is for the dedication of those right-of-way rights-of-way and easements to be dedicated to ODOT at no cost.
Anything else to add?
We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel? I think we're all aware of what's going on there. It is important to note that the drilling rigs out there are not fracking or oil wells. They're actually doing the geological core samples.
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Maurer, did you sign up for this 7-14? I believe you did.
Yes. Has ODOT ruled, accepted, rejected, or modified Stephen White's superb design? You know what I'm talking about?
They've accepted the design on the art.
They accept it as is. Oh, wonderful. Splendid.
There you have it. Counsel, any further discussion? Anne?
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Ms. Jenice Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we're at introduction first reading, ordinance is 8-14?
Commending the annual appropriations ordinance for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2014.
I'll introduce it. Ms. Mumma?
Good afternoon, mayor, members of council. This is a routine piece of legislation that we bring forward at the beginning of each calendar year. This piece of legislation appropriates the unencumbered funds that are remaining within our tree preservation account as well as appropriates to our TIF funds all of the debt service payments that come from those TIF funds.
So this is housekeeping?
Yes.
Any further discussion? We need a motion to dispense with the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Okay, Anne?
Ms. Jenice Zerker?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Any further discussion? We need a motion to dispense with the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Okay, Anne?
Ms. Genise Zerker.
Yes.
Ms. Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
And Mayor Keenan.
Yes. Ordinance nine days fourteen.
Resoning approximately twenty-seven point five acres located on the north side of Hard Road and on the west side of Sawmill Road from PUD Plan United Development District to PUD Plan United Development District to modify the development text and preliminary development plan regarding an addition to the existing grocery store and modifications to the permitted and conditional uses.
I'll introduce it. Ms. Rouse?
Good evening. This is ordinance zero nine dash one four. This is a request to make modifications to subarea five A within the northeast quad PUD. I think everyone is familiar with this site. This was rezoned in a subsequent final development plan in two thousand and four for this particular subarea, which is located at that northwest corner of the intersection with Sawmill Road and Hard Road. It contains the Kroger shopping center and retail portion without buildings. The shopping center is located in that western portion with a parking located along Sawmill Road. The proposal includes two parts of the request by the applicant. The first is related to proposed modifications to the permitted square footages to the Kroger building, as well as then uses within the development text for the entire shopping center. I'm going to go through each one of those individually. The Kroger Center is located in the northern portion, or is the biggest building on the north part of this. The existing development text outlines retail, which includes that southern L-shaped piece with a maximum square footage of around seventy-four thousand square feet. Then the Kroger building itself was limited to ninety-nine, nine hundred and forty-five square feet, was outlined within the text. The applicant has come forward because they wish to provide two additional areas to this Kroger building, a little over five thousand square foot addition to the rear for some office and storage, and then a small five hundred square foot addition to the front. So in order to accommodate this, they are requesting modifications within the proposed development text to increase the area of the Kroger building, which then increases the overall size of the shopping center. The part of the planning commission review, this was reviewed twice at the planning commission and discussed heavily the concerns of the original intent of this, which was to remain a neighborhood center. So in order to address planning commission's concern, the applicant has identified within the text that the retail portion of this will be limited to ninety-eight thousand five hundred square feet as a maximum. That way, the applicant is limited into what can be the retail grocery area, and then any leftover area would be permitted to be arranged for square footage and, or excuse me, storage and office as they see fit. In addition, there is also within the text permitted a twenty-four thousand square foot addition to the rear along Emerald Parkway. The planning commission requested that the applicant decrease the square footage of that to twenty-three thousand five hundred to offset this five hundred square feet located out to the front, so the applicant has complied with that as well. And then the second part of this is minor modifications to the uses outlined in the text, which will be comparable to other retail centers. So they've added health and allied services as a permitted use with a cap on class size. And then in addition, we've added some conditional uses for tutoring services, as well as then outdoor dining patios. There was outdoor service already included in there, so it was just expanding it to be more clear that that included outdoor dining patios and then retail, or excuse me, real estate offices as well. So those three would have to go back. The planning commission requested that those be a conditional use. That way, they have purview over the approval of those. So the applicant did go before planning commission and received a recommendation of approval with the one condition, additional condition to reduce that square footage, which the applicant has included in their text. They did also receive final development plan approval to incorporate those additions pending the outcome of this, as well as a conditional use for an outdoor area to the front. I'm here to answer any questions, as well as the applicant.
Very good. Applicant presentation? Mr. Hale?
Yes, sir. Ben Hale, thirty-seven West Broad Street, Columbus, Ohio. You know, Kroger, this is the Kroger building, and currently what's going on in that building is, this is the first of these larger grocery stores that they built, and it's been there a while, and they have learned a great deal about what their customers want. They, you know, they've got a Super Walmart coming in across the street, they've got Target coming up the street from them, and those are two very powerful competitors who both have grocery. And the best way I know how to say it is in terms of getting this store, the interior of this store remodeled, and their hair is on fire. They feel a real need to get this done. You know, they can't compete on purely a dollar basis. They have to be able to provide to their customers what their customers want and need, and in order to do that, they need to remodel the interior of this center. And so what they're doing is they're taking, and currently in the middle of the store is the coffee shop, and they're bringing the coffee shop out front. That's that little five hundred square feet, and they're going to do an outdoor seating area for the coffee shop. The addition to the building is seamless in terms of its architecture and everything. Nobody will ever know the difference. And in those areas, that will simply be storage and office space. One of the things that they're being forced to do now, they don't have enough storage today, and they're being forced to run panel trucks down to this store to keep it supplied with items that they could bring in, you know, on their regular semi-deliveries, and so it's hurting the operation of the store. But this is all a part of trying to make sure that what they know about their clients and know about their customers, what they want in that store is going to be there, and the way they see it, they win on service, on providing specialty goods, on providing meat and prepared foods and grape vegetables and, you know, sort of the outer ring. When you go into the shopping center, it's all about the outer ring. The more up and down the aisles, that's, they have to provide all that stuff, but they win and they're profitable on the outer ring of that store. And so they need to, they really need to step up their game here, and they're going to do a very major remodel. We did go to, I called, I was asked to call the Northeast Civic Association, and I did call them. They asked me to send them our plans, talked to them, and they seem to have no issue whatsoever. So I talked to Mark Parkhill, who's been a longtime member of that association, and I sent him the documents, so.
Great.
And then I talked to him again, and he said, hey, I shop there, I understand, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any counsel questions? Tim?
Yeah. You know, I have some concerns, you know, based on the planning and zoning conversation that took place. Jennifer and I was wondering if you could help me. I had a conversation with one of the commission members, and there were two dissenters. There was a third, at least, the minute seemed to suggest that, you know, the third commission member was expressing some concern. The proposal that those individuals were making was to take six thousand square feet away from the unbuilt addition here, and, well, you know, to keep within the current zoning, and also taking into consideration the history, you know, behind this development, you know, which was the subject of a citywide referendum, and the sensitivity to the amount of retail space like this. Do I have it right so far? And that sounds perfectly reasonable to me. And I don't suppose, I mean, that was not staff's recommendation. Staff's recommendation was one of approval, is that correct?
Yes.
So to allow the six thousand square feet?
To not reduce that future twenty-four thousand, no, we were not recommending that, that that be reduced further.
Right. I mean, I understand the concerns, you know, that Kroger may have, and, you know, and, you know, they're certainly more expert, you know, with respect to what they need to do to, you know, succeed in a competitive marketplace, you know, but I do have concern about increasing the square footage here, you know, particularly in light of the history. I appreciate the fact Mr. Hale's indicated that he's talked to Matt Parkhill. I'd like to, I'd like to, you know, feel some sense of comfort that, you know, that the survey, if you will, you know, has been a little more comprehensive than that.
Okay.
You know, and I can take it upon myself to contact, you know, Mr. Parkhill and, you know, other leaders in that area. You know, there's an awful lot of retail, an awful lot of retail, and, you know, it concerns me.
Okay.
So.
So you've got some follow-up?
Yes.
Tim?
Could I just say a couple of words? You know, this center, Kroger leases this building. They do not control the rest of the center. And, you know, when we did this center, one of the things, one of the things that this wing that comes out was supposed to serve, you see the front part come around, and that's the service area, and the extension was really intended to create a courtyard behind it so that when you're traveling on Emerald Parkway, you don't look back into that courtyard. I mean, first of all, I think with the extension you're making of Emerald Parkway, that the construction of that retail becomes more likely now, but it's also a way to create that courtyard. You take six thousand off of that, which I don't think the owner has any interest in doing, you're just opening up the courtyard more. I think it's, I think it's a dysfunction. The other thing we did, in terms of putting a limit on the square footage of the retail in the Kroger building so that these areas only have, can only be office and storage, we have not increased square footage of retail on this site. One, we took off the five hundred because we were adding that, but in terms of the retail on this site, we have not increased the retail in this center one inch. It's all about office and storage, and that storage, frankly, all we're doing now, all they're doing now is bringing it in by panel trucks, which is very inefficient, very costly to them, and frankly, it just puts more traffic on the road. So we think from a number of points of view, taking this six thousand off, Kroger, first of all, doesn't have the ability to do it. I mean, we did talk to the owner, and they agreed to take off five hundred if Kroger would pay for it, but we're not really, it's really not a, when you come to the storage area, it's really not a, we're really not talking about apples and apples, we're talking about retail and storage. And that's why we put the, I think a part of that whole discussion was us putting this limitation on retail so that in the future, these areas that are being added cannot be added to the retail part of that, of that Kroger store. So we're not really, I don't think in any way, increasing the retail on this site.
Okay. All right, thanks for that input. Any other questions or discussion?
The only comment that I would make that, as we know, Kroger was across the street on the east side of Sawmill Road and elected to move years ago over here to this side and to really be in Dublin. And we saw what happened with Dublin Village Center when everything moved across the street. And so for ten years or more now, it's been an empty area in Dublin. So I think that we, certainly it was a fight, you know, ten, fifteen years ago now, I think at least, when this first went in, but a lot has changed in way businesses, especially grocery stores, do business now. And an enormous amount has changed on Sawmill Road, and is only going to get more of the big box, which we have prohibited basically from coming to Dublin. And so I think we, we need to be cautious and smart about expansion we permit, but recognize that we don't want to lose more businesses because of our past requirements that aren't consistent now with the industries any longer.
I think it's noteworthy that Mac Parkhill's weighed in on this and the East Side Civic Association as well, and they do not seem to have any angst over this storage space and office space, so at least that's my two cents worth there. Any other discussion or questions? All right, then, the second reading, public hearing will take place on February ten.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance ten dash fourteen.
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to Everhart Financial Group Inc., doing business as Everhart Advisors, to induce it to retain a main office and associated operations and workforce within the city, authorizing execution of a development and land exchange agreement.
I will introduce it. And I have a note here, Ms. Gilger's presenting, but that doesn't appear to be the case. Unfortunately, no, it's not.
Okay. Mayor, city, mayors, members of counsel, good afternoon, good evening. The economic development staff has been in discussions with a Dublin-based financial consulting firm for the construction of their new corporate headquarters in Dublin. They have proposed, identified, I should say, four parcels at the intersection of perimeter and post-road, which you see here on the screen, and part of that development required their interest in two parcels budding perimeter drive that are currently owned by the city that are going to be critical to facilitating their construction for a variety of different reasons on that particular site. The company itself has contracted with the property at seventy-one fifty-five Post Road and also with the property down off perimeter that is currently owned by Mount Carmel. Each of those parcels are about total about two point eight acres, and the city's parcel is just under one acre. The city, as part of the economic development agreement, is proposing the transfer of approximately point seven four acres of the point nine two acres of the city-owned property to the company with the, for the ability for them to construct their, again, ten thousand square foot corporate headquarters. Now, this whole parcel will require, all four parcels will require rezoning, and the contingency to that is the purchase contract for both the parcels in red, and as well as the transfer of the city land will be contingent upon the rezoning. The company has already started that process and are on the agenda for the February sixth Planning and Zoning Committee meeting for their conceptual plan.
Very, very good, thank you. Any discussion, counsel questions?
Great to see them.
Okay. Second reading will take place on February ten as well. Thank you. This would be resolution three dash fourteen.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for construction of additional storage buildings and renovations to the existing building.
I'll introduce it. Staff report? And you are not Brian Ashford?
I am not.
Michelle?
Good evening, members of counsel. This resolution and the next resolution are related to the same project. This first resolution is for acceptance, the lowest and best bid for two items. The first is the construction of additional storage building in an area adjacent to our fleet maintenance building for storage of equipment, and the second is for renovation to an existing wash bay that we also use as a cold storage facility to accommodate an automated vehicle wash system. Five hundred thousand dollars was the total budget for this project. We did receive ten bids, and the lowest and best was from Two K General. A little information about the costs related to this project. The Two K's bid was for five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars. But in addition to this bid total and the items in this bid, it is important to note that there's also an additional cost for the actual automated wash system, and that cost is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, and that's in the next ordinance. So in total, this project is a hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred dollars over the budgeted allocation. This additional cost would be paid for out of reserves. And just to note, the additional cost was largely due to the need for additional electrical capacity for the wash system, and we realized that significant modifications were needed to the existing drain system. I'm going to answer any questions you may have. We're asking for passage of this resolution tonight.
Questions?
I'm just curious how loud the automatic vehicle wash is.
It should not impact, or it shouldn't be any louder than any of the other noises in that area, if your concern is residents in the area.
Always.
We did have a brief discussion about that, I think last go-around, and because...
Yeah, when we did the resolution, the AEP for the easement that they needed.
Yeah.
And this is well within our facility area, it really is. There was a exhibit showing how far this actual...
Right, I see it's four hundred feet.
...is from.
Okay, just wanted to ask a question.
I noted here, I'm not really that familiar with Two K General, I know a number of these other bidders, but, and you almost always say, we've checked the references. Is Two K from a local company, or is it, where are they from?
They are, and we have used them on several other projects, and they've done excellent
All right, other questions? All right, Anne.
Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Genesi Zerker.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes. Thank you. Resolution 4-14.
Waiving the competitive bidding requirement for the purchase and installation of a vehicle wash system.
I'll introduce it.
As I mentioned, this is the other portion of this project, and we were able to evaluate with the help of a consultant, seven automatic vehicle wash systems based on several areas of criteria that we were looking for. One, most importantly, was the underbody wash system. We are seeing a lot of impact on our vehicles and the undercarriages related to the salt. Our vehicles, on average, will travel 4,500, 5,000 miles per year, so we keep them for an extended period of time. And we're seeing the bodies of the vehicles because of the issues with, with salt, really deteriorating before, before they should. And we are asking for passage of this resolution as well, and I can answer any other questions you may have.
Questions, discussion? Anne?
Ms. Genesi Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes. Resolution 6-14.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the resurfacing of a Sawmill Road within the city of Dublin.
I'll introduce it. Paul, briefly.
It goes to my half hour staff report.
We're just, we're just resurfacing now.
Exactly, yes. Mayor, members of council staff previously reported on this northbound lane addition on Sawmill Road, and this, before you this evening, is quite simply the consent legislation that the Ohio Department of Transportation has asked us to adopt. Our portion of the project is going to be the portion of pavement along the west side of Sawmill Road, essentially south of Billingsley Road up to the 270 bridges. We're also suggesting some curb replacement and some sidewalk additions as part of this work. The cost of that work is $49,330. The total of the project for ODOT is two points, just over $2.6 million, and they anticipate going to construction of this project this summer. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Good job, questions?
What's the timeframe for the resurfacing?
It'll be done as a component of the project, it'll probably be towards the end, so I'm thinking it'll probably be the fall of this year.
Of this year, thank you. Go ahead.
Anybody else?
Yeah, the resurfacing, the staff report says construction, and I understand they're adding a northbound lane, but I'm just talking about the resurfacing.
Correct.
It says it's going to begin likely in September of this year, but it won't be completed until June of the following year.
Yeah, the total project itself, I think they plan on, and that's probably just restoration if it gets late into the year, so, but that, that's their current schedule.
So, do you think it's conceivable that the resurfacing and the addition of one lane could be completed in the, by the end of this year?
I believe that's their goal, but it really is going to be weather dependent, and they also have some utility conflicts to deal with also.
And is this intended, is this part of a long-term plan to address the issues with, you know, traffic exiting off 270?
Yeah, it's really a component of their ramp clear program, an initiative to basically prevent vehicles from stacking on the ramp and backing up and congesting the freeway itself. So, through their studies, they've identified, obviously, that several of the vehicles definitely, certainly during the PM peak, exit the ramp, go north, and many, many, many of those vehicles then turn right onto hard road and to those neighborhoods located within the city of Columbus.
Anybody else? Anne?
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
Ms. Genesi Zerker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
And Mayor Keenan.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 7-14.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary documents for the city to enter into a billing agreement with Washington Township Ohio for the provision of fire and emergency medical services to those properties in the Jerome Township portion of Tartan Ridge for which easements for fire and emergency medical services have been executed by the property owners.
I'll introduce it. Ms. Sa.
Good evening, as you know, staff has been working closely with Washington Township, the developer of Tartan Ridge, and is reaching out to Jerome Township in effort to address a fire, any EMS service issue in this Tartan Ridge area, to clarify jurisdictional boundaries. As this goes forward, we've had some property owners in the area agree to enter into an easement to allow Washington Township to provide services within the Jerome Township boundaries. As part of that effort, in cooperation with Washington Township, the Dublin administration is recommending that we serve as a billing agent to collect charges for those services to those properties here going forward. We feel that, that we have the capacity and the ability to do this on staff and believe that this is a appropriate course of action to take tandem with this effort here. City staff continue to work with Washington Township and will be meeting with Jerome Township here soon to discuss the ultimate solution of a boundary adjustment and see if that is a feasible goal to make for, for this calendar year. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Council?
I just had one question as a follow-up, just because memos are always written before meetings. In this memo, it says that 14 of the 30 have signed and executed the agreement, has there been any increase in that number?
Not that I'm aware of, since we wrote this memo.
And are the other people that have not signed in opposition to it, or what is the reason for their waiting to sign?
The township has been handling those negotiations, so I can speak only in general terms of what we've heard back. We've heard that some are concerned about the community authority that at one point was levying this charge to these properties. The community authority has taken action to no longer do that. Additionally, some property owners are just sorting out what this means for them to be receiving this as a bill, not part of their property taxes, and to sort through that arrangement for themselves.
Thank you.
The community authority is a really totally separate issue in terms of what's going on here. I know some of them have some angst with respect to that, so I hope we're separating this as we have those negotiations.
Absolutely, our conversation has been, is ensuring that we can provide Dublin-level services to this entire neighborhood is the goal.
Let me ask another question, since these are collected in arrears, does this arrangement have the same force of law that a tax, a tax duplicate would have? Because this is kind of a, it's an easement that says we're going to pay. What I'm worried about is, since it is in arrears, somebody leaves, who's going to get, I mean, you know what I'm saying, it's like a tax bill, it's brought forward, at a closing, it's taken care of, the seller owes X amount, the buyer owes X amount to the, prorated to the day. So, is that, that issue, does it have the force of law for collection?
Yeah, it should, and part of what, in the agreement, we'll have to make sure that that's the type of information that gets recorded, so whenever somebody is doing a closing, that this agreement shows up as a recorded document. The easement will be recorded, and it should include all the information on the billing status.
Yeah, I'm worried about should, but...
It, it part is any title search that occurs on a property, it would show up like any other information on the property.
Mr. Smith?
Mike, we checked with our real estate people, and it'll just act as, just like a tax lien, it'll be there and be prorated at the time of closing.
I just wasn't sure, because I heard easement, I heard agreements, and we wanted to make sure we were good there. Also, what happens with the mutual aid there? We've got 16 people who haven't signed up, and they go, why do I worry about it, I'll just let Jerome come service it. Is there any issue there? I mean, it's, it could be problematic.
Well, certainly, if, if one of these 16 property owners who have chosen to remain with Jerome Services, that their 911 calls will be handled differently, those will be handled by Union County Sheriff's Department.
I mean, that's an important part of this, so that people have incentive to move forward.
That they understand that their 911 calls that come into our 911 center in Dublin will be transferred to Union County and will be handled from Union County for the dispatch of services needed to it. Should there be a need for mutual aid through that, then certainly our processes will go forward to support that, but the initial dispatch will go through Union County.
And that was part of the information that was included in the January 9 letter that went to the residents, just so that they were clear that their service would be...
I just wanted to reiterate that we need to be very clear about that going forward. Okay. What do we need to vote here, Anne?
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
Mr. Genesi Zerker.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Okay, under other, request for maintenance relief, Kramer's Crossing, we have a, we have a request to postpone this, so I'll entertain a motion. So moved.
Second.
And that motion will be to postpone to the February 10th, or do we have to put a date in there?
We don't have a specific date.
We don't have a specific date, just postpone.
The postponement was as a result of their request, and so we're assuming that they'll be ready for the February 10th meeting, but we're not sure.
So, we have a motion, we have a second, Anne?
Ms. Genesi Zerker.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Lucklider.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
And Mayor Keenan.
Yes. Staff comments, Marcia?
Yeah, a couple items, we had information at your desk this evening on the fact that we are having a public information meeting for Emerald Parkway Phase 8 on Wednesday, February 5th, at Sylota High School, from 6 to 8. Letters went out to all of the surrounding residents today, just so that we can provide them updates on the project and some of the information related to the blasting that will occur in, in the area as a result of the roadway project. The second item, we had information under items of interest related to the magistrate that, that we use for mayor's court, and as a result of Mr. Peterson's election to council, we need to have a process to get an additional backup for magistrate, and we plan on following the same process that we followed a few years ago, and if council has any questions or information or need additional information on that, just let us know, and we'll move forward. And then, also this evening, we had some information that was placed in your packet with regard to updates on the activities that have been going on in the last week or so with regard to weather and the snow removal, and to just let council know the status of where we are on our cleanup and to recognize the efforts of all the staff that have been working 12-hour shifts for probably the last week or so.
Mm-hmm.
And the fact that over the past weekend, it was difficult with the, the amount of snow that kept falling and the drifting. We did receive a few comments or complaints concerned about the fact that residential streets were not plowed on Saturday, but we were in the process of trying to keep the primary and the secondary streets plowed. There's some additional information with regard, regard to salt and our supply. One of the things that you've been reading about in the papers, the fact that we're all having a little more difficulty this year obtaining the salt, and that's the case for us, but we think now we have a sufficient plot, supply that will last us for the next few events, and we'll continue to order the salt, and hopefully it will continue to, to come in and we'll keep our supply stocked. So, if you have any questions, let us know, and Megan is here to address any additional questions that you may have with regard to all the work that's been going on, and I would just like to recognize all the staff.
Absolutely.
It's been a lot of work, and it's a very tiring job to sit in those trucks for 12 hours at a time in cloud snow.
Yeah, the nature of this, of this snow event, such that we had the snow come, it clears, then the wind blows, and, and I know even at my home, the squalls come and fill it all back up again inside of a few minutes, so, and we have to hit those primary roads first and then the secondary, and so we didn't get to some of the residential areas as quick as we normally would, but adds off to everybody, they really, really worked hard, and I know ours is second to none to anybody in the central Ohio, or Ohio for that matter. Let me ask you this, on the magistrate process, does council have any issue with just going ahead instead of waiting to go ahead with that process? Anybody have any input on that? She, we're going to follow the same process that we always have, and that would be an RF, an RFP.
Yeah, we'll do an RFP, and then we'll bring the qualified candidates back to the administrative committee.
Is that okay to have her proceed, or do we, we need to wait on that, or? No, I think that's fine. You're good to go.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, that's it.
All right. Committee reports. Rick?
Yeah.
Admin committee?
Yeah, just very, very quickly, Sarah, this is more for you, we've decided that we'll go ahead with a facilitator for the retreat, so we can go ahead with that. Also, in the next two weeks, by February 10th, would encourage further comments from all of you, please, with respect to items of, for discussion of the retreat, so we can get that defined for, for staff to assist with whatever information and support that we will need for our retreat. March 5th, if that works on everybody's calendar, for, we'll conduct interviews for board and commissions that evening, starting at 6 o'clock. Hopefully, we can do it in one night, but we'll see how many applications we do receive. Over the next month, the admin committee, I'll take the first one here, with respect to the code of conduct forms to be executed by board and commission members. January 29th, I will attend the ARB and secure those forms and go over it, more importantly, to explain to all the members why it is that we are asking them to, to execute the form. Thursday, February 6th, you can do that one, okay, that's the planning and zoning commission. And then Tuesday, February 11th, would be the Community Service Advisory Commission. Greg, I can do that, but we'll figure that out. And then Thursday, February 27th, will be BZA, so we'll, between Merrily and Greg and I, we'll figure out who's going to appear at those. That's, that's all I have.
Any other committee chairs have any reports they want to make?
I just, oh.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just had one comment. Rick and I had a meeting with, as a finance committee, as you know, we met on the bed tax grants, and we put on hold the Rotary Project request because they weren't ready with a comprehensive proposal yet. So, Rick and I had a meeting with two of the members of Rotary to further answer questions that they had regarding the proposal and what we were looking for. This is really for St. Patrick's Day 2015, but they need to be, get preparations now for a year from now. So, I just wanted to be people aware that we have had a meeting with them, they will be resubmitting, and we'll be holding a finance committee meeting when that happens.
Very good, thank you. This is the time of the meeting when we go to council roundtable. Greg, do you want to start?
That's what we were doing.
Uh?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Last Friday, I had the opportunity as the liaison from city council to the school system and the school board, I sat down with Dr. Hoadley, Todd Hoadley, and his chief financial officer, Steve Osborne, these are just, my hat's off to the school board for selecting Mr. Hoadley, or Dr. Hoadley is a fantastic individual. We spent, spent some time together, talked over a number of really important issues. I'm very excited, look forward to working with him and, and Mr. Osborne, they are just top-notch, and it, the relationship between this body and that body is obviously extremely important in the schools and the city, and I'm very much looking forward to it. He went, he attended the meeting you guys went to about the Bridge Street corridor and listened to the speaker, and they're very engaged, they're, they're getting excited about that project as well. I look forward to working with Dr. Hoadley, and I really appreciated his time, and I appreciate this body appointed me as liaison to the schools. That's all.
Thank you. Amy?
I really don't have anything other than, are we talking about retreat topics via email back and forth? Not here?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank council for the birthday card. Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to follow up on the elderly care facility document. I thought it was really confusing.
Yeah.
And I wasn't really even sure the point of it. So, it doesn't, you know, it says for informational purposes only, and from what I could gather, basically what I understood is that we've used 101 classifications to, you know, they're all different, and we've just, we, we don't have a standard classification to be approving these, and so we've used a variety of them depending on the location they were, basically, and the type of facility perhaps that it was going to be. I would like to really understand, what, what did we really want from this to begin with? Because I know I had concerns about the number of these facilities that we were getting in our community, and we had been told quite a while ago in the last couple of years, that when the state did their look at this whole bed issue, that northwest Columbus area, the northwest of the county, was lacking in the number of beds based on population need, et cetera. And then, it seemed like they were all decided to locate in Dublin rather than, you know, the entire northwest area of Franklin County. And, but I wasn't really sure... the entire northwest area of Franklin County. And, but I wasn't really sure how this helped us learn enough about going forward. I mean, we can't do anything about the ones that have been approved, but how do we move forward with ensuring that we don't end up with ten thousand beds for this population in our exclusive community rather than throughout the county?
I, I really think that there's two things here. One is your initial question about long-term care facilities. I, I remember the question very, very queerly, clearly, and it really had to do with the distribution, and we tried to address that in the memo as best we could, based on information from the Department of Health. Department of Health issues those bed license, the map in the report, tried to address the distribution of that and how those are traded, if you will, or balanced between counties. So that's what the map tries to speak to. The other piece of that, that really is Steve Langworthy's presentation in this memo, and he's not here tonight, he's out of town, and I would prefer we have that discussion later, since he's more the code expert on that. I think generally what Steve is telling you is we've got some work to do in the code if, from a policy perspective, we want to, to guide where and how these things can take place. So I, I think that's sort of the crux of the report, and we probably ought to take up that dialogue in the future as, as a policy concern.
So are they actually working on this, the staff, to bring to us?
No, we wanted to give you that background first, and we owed you that, that answer that you had asked, and then we have to, and really look at this.
They did a good job. They confused all of us, I think, so.
Well, I think the answer is, we don't have an answer, so there you have it. So we, do we want to tackle this as a policy or not?
Cleveland and Cincinnati metro areas had an overabundance. We had a, we had a need, we did not have enough. And then the whole issue where everything's co-mingled into assisted living, dementia, Alzheimer's, kind of where you have a twenty-four-seven kind of need, a number of us are dealing with that with our own families, actually. So I think we're very attuned to that, and probably not too far for ourselves from you.
Speak for yourself.
And specifically, specifically in the northwest part of the county, it's just demographics and market driving it. So if you want to influence where and how and so forth, we're going to have to address our own code. That's the bottom line.
I guess what I was looking for, Merrily, and Paul, with you, is that everything I read, in the next five years, the, the population age sixty-five and over will double, which is, that's, that's mind-boggling. And, and I believe that to be the case. But what I was looking for, Dana, is from staff to, okay, let's look at our code, and let's see how best to handle this issue and this segment that's going on. So, you know, I think that'd be the next step here.
Right.
Yeah, I, I would agree, because we've had, just in the neighborhood, over towards Llewellyn Farms, there are two separate companies that have been interested in locating, and I know one we dissuaded, because I was speaking with Claudia Husack, and she said, well, this one is sort of more of a hospital type, and so since it is, it's not permitted here. But that sort of leaves the door open for, well, what about another one? And these, you know, neighborhoods kind of want to know, where is this going to be? And I think we need to be very proactive, and I think what council was saying is, we want to be proactive and locate these things where they make sense and where we would like them, and in a number that we believe will serve our community and not just ha, I mean, apartments and senior living are the, the, you know, project du jour, and so there's, you know, there's this huge market, as, as Rick alluded to, and it's very opportunistic. I mean, that's the way the market is, but I don't think we want to have an overabundance of these, and I think we want to be very selective about where we locate them.
Yeah, it's curious to me with the land values that we have here, that they would locate here. I mean, it would seem to me...
Think about how much...
What they charge.
Yeah.
Yeah, but just, I mean, obviously, but if you're gonna, if it really doesn't make a lot of difference if you're here or there, it seems like you'd find a place that didn't have land values, and that's just casual observation. I, I find it curious. Is, is everybody else seeing this plethora of, of build-out across the county? Do we know?
We don't know.
I think the same reason that Dublin's attractive to us, it's attractive to those folks. I mean, it's either individuals picking their own residence, you know, there's a lot of folks that choose to go into assisted living. It's not that they're, you know, suffering mentally and they don't have that, you know, choice to make, and then it's others where family members are making the decision, and you either want them to be close to you, you want them to be in a nice community, you want...
The ability to pay. That's, I guess that's another big deal, so.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, the, the availability of quality medical services, you know, everything that makes it attractive to us, makes our community attractive to us.
Do you have enough to pull together?
Well, I think, I think we answered the question about licensing and distribution. That's handled at the state.
Yeah.
That's, we answered, that was the initial question, I specifically remember. The backside of this is, as a result of really trying to answer the question and looking at our own code, and the other challenges that we've had over the last few years, as these have picked up in demand, I think we've come to realize our code needs some work. So I'm going to take that as direction to go ahead and work on it, and we'll work on it, and we'll bring it back.
Ask Steve to look at this. He can look at the stream on this and see the confusion, and then get something back to us, illuminate this next week, next meeting. Okay?
Thank you.
Anything else?
The only other thing I wanted to mention was on your snow and ice operations update. I, too, would like to thank our warriors, because they do do a terrific job, and of course, they are a product of their success, you know, and I only saw two emails criticizing the person's personal street, and I think that is pretty darn good, when you look at the mileage that they're cleaning up. And I think that those people wrote to raise concern because they are such, used to such excellent service that they forget it is largely dictated also by weather conditions. And, but thanks to all the staff and everybody that works on this to provide such high level of service to our community.
And the good news is, we get more chances to serve our community in this capacity, because I've been reading, I'm kind of a weather geek, and February's supposed to be as snowy as January was cold.
There goes the budget.
Awesome.
Wait till March.
Tim?
Express my appreciation to all of staff that's been involved in snow removal, and as Merrily said, I mean, you know, it, it's inherently unpredictable, and I think the fact remains that Dublin does a better job at snow removal than any other community that I'm aware of or have ever lived in, or, you know, am familiar with. So, anyway. And, and, you know, appreciate the fact that, you know, working twelve-hour shifts for a week and, and, you know, having done it previously and with the prospect of doing it in the near future, you know, is, you know, is, is a personal sacrifice as well. You know, so, you know, a salute to our public employees. Thanks.
Thanks, Tim. Rick?
Yeah, very quickly, first off, and most important, happy birthday, Amy.
Mm-hmm.
It's, what, number twenty-three, maybe?
Careful, careful, Rick.
I know. That's first off. Also, just echo what everybody else is saying about our snow removal. I think it's exceptional. You know, I've lived in colder environments than this, and, you know, but we do an exceptional job, and I know over the weekend, I had to get out there and snow blow a couple times because I thought the, it cleared and the weather did. I went out there and did my thing, and two hours later, I had to go back and do it again. So taking that time, the kajillion, I can understand what these snow warriors are doing out there, and I want to thank them all very much. They, they do an exceptional job. But you know, maybe futuristically, we might be wanting to think about someday building a dome over the city from November fifteenth.
There you go. You got any money for that, Marcia?
So you and Angel, if you will start looking at that, maybe we can nip this whole issue in the bud with respect to snow removals. We'll just put a dome around it.
We're likely to see that in the paper tomorrow.
Yeah, well, yeah, we, we may, but...
Thanks, Rick.
It's okay.
Is that all?
That's, yeah.
Is that enough?
That's enough.
I have a few things to add. Tim and Merrily, you told me that there was a lot of activity as mayor, and it's already, in the first week or two, started. Appreciate council's confidence. I did the, the World Heritage Sites of Japan opening reception at DAC on the fourteenth. I did a Channel Six interview with Good Day Columbus on the eighteenth. The Martin Luther King Day, they had a presentation and proclamation I presented on behalf of council on the twentieth. And a real fun one was the Grand Leprecon meeting last week. I presume that's public now. I don't want to spill...
Yes, it is.
It is public now. So congratulations to Michael Blackwell. He's obviously been very active in the community for many years as a volunteer. I called him up to congratulate him, which is one of the fun things of, of being the mayor, and I said, Michael, this is Mike Keenan calling, and I've got a little problem with, with the book over, you got some fines, library fines, I wonder if we could talk about that? And he kind of stuttered around a little bit, and I said, no, actually, I'm calling to congratulate you as the Grand Leprecon. So he sent me some pointed emails later that he was going to get even, so. And then finally, I noted Dana McDaniel, General McDaniel, has been named Chair of the Franklin County Emergency Management Homeland Security, and that's quite a, quite an honor. We're glad to have you on board. You'll be the two thousand and fourteen chairman for that Franklin County Emergency Management Homeland Security, and I know you'd previously served as vice chair in two thousand and thirteen, and we appreciate your community involvement to that end. Thank you very much, and we'll stand adjourned.